Good evening. Welcome to the Council of Whole and School Committee Joint Meeting, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2013, 6:00 PM. Please join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gender item number two, roll call, please.
Counselor Linderman?
Present.
Counselor McCucci?
Present.
Counselor Carrasco?
Present.
Counselor Clemmons?
Present.
Counselor Mann?
Present.
Counselor Moriarty?
Excused.
Counselor Nicola?
Excused.
Counselor Pellican?
Present.
Counselor Vandal?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Dr. Domingo?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Absent.
Ms. Appson? Thank you very much. Gender item number three, introduction and discussion of the three candidates for the vacated school committee position. I'm just really randomly going to take them out of no special order. I'll just call up the candidate. They can give us a quick overview of their intentions. Then I would ask the council and the school committee if they'd like to ask a few questions, do so, but just remember on this process, when you become a, when you're a candidate, you have a right to go to the debate or you have a right to not go to the debate. So really, just be respectful of your questions and stuff like that because some people just don't go to debates and stuff like that and stuff. So I just ask everyone be respectful and so we can move forward with this process. With that being said, my first candidate, I will ask Christopher F. Olivo to come forward, please. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. My name's Christopher Olivo. I am glad to have been able to place my name into, into the poll of people who have submitted for this vacant seat. I, I have a great interest in serving on the school committee for a number of reasons, primarily because I have children in the school district. I have one son who has graduated last year from high school and here in Southbridge. I have two children who are currently attending the Southbridge High School. I have a son who is in elementary at Eastford Road School. I have worked with the children and youth of this community and I have seen the need for further guidance, whether it be educational or community. And I, I feel that as a candidate selected, I could bring a great deal of, of knowledge in, in the community and, and working with people and being able to bridge a gap between education and community.
Anyone have any questions? Counselor Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Mr. Olivo. You say you work with the youth in the community. Are you with youth organizations?
I have served, I'm serving currently on the Eastford School Council. I am also working, when I say working with the youth, I talk about sports that I've been involved with and, and sports that my children have been involved with. I've talked to a number of the students and, and who've questioned me as far as career, career decisions and choices, whether it be college, whether it be military. I try to stay as active as I can in the sports because I think that the kids that we bring or that come out to sports show an interest in, in becoming a better person. I think that, that if we start there, we'll be able to improve and, and maybe influence their peers as well through showing them the fun that can be had in that. I have worked with, last year volunteered with the ASPIDA program. I know a number of the students on the ASPIDA program, to include my daughter, who is currently a member of the ASPIDA program and plan to continue serving in that capacity as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor McCucci?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. Olivo, thank you very much for submitting your name. It's great to see new faces coming forward and I, I appreciate that. As you know, it's a temporary position.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you, are you considering running?
I am considering.
Come the June election? Or is this just something you want to get your feet wet and see if it's something that you would be interested in?
It's something that I've been interested in for a number of years. I have been here since, in Southbridge since 2006. I am a member of the Massachusetts Army National Guard. I serve active duty. So in my, in my career, it's taken me out of state, out of country a number of times, which has prevented me from applying before or planning to run. I am currently stateside and don't have any future deployments in sight. So I felt that this is a great opportunity to take the time and to see how things go and really just start to learn what the school community is about and, and where I can, where I can attribute my knowledge, where I can help out. And if, if all goes well, I do plan on running in June as well.
Thank you. And one more question. Obviously, you have children in the system. What do you feel are the pros and the cons to our school, our school district?
I think the pros, I mean, we'll start with the pros. I think that this school district is a great school district. I think that the new school buildings, the moving and, and the downsides in some of the classrooms at the elementary, I think are a great deal in, are, are a big part in helping to improve the classroom setting for these kids so that they're able to learn. I think that it's an inviting community. I think that it's a great family feeling. I think that we have the brand-new school. I think that we need to capitalize on that. So one of the, one of the, one of the cons that I think would really just stands out is that we have a number of schools that surround our school district that are school choice. So I think that as a school community, school committee, what are we doing in working with the schools to keep our children here and to keep them from seeking education elsewhere?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else have any questions? School community member Donovan?
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you, Mr. Olivo. Welcome.
Likewise. Thank you.
My first question is, what does student achievement mean to you?
Student achievement to me means being able to achieve a diploma. I think that that is first and foremost in today's society, being able to progress, continuing to learn. As long as they continue to learn and continue to push, push forward, they will become outstanding citizens and, and a great addition to our community.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question is, how will the kids that are currently in our school districts benefit by having you on our school committee?
I am and have been a great example, I think. I've talked with many of my friends, my children's friends. I think I know what it is to struggle. I've been there. I've struggled with my education at first when I was younger. I know what it is to come from a school district that was at the bottom part of the state of Texas. When adversity stared me in the eye, which could keep me from progressing in my, in my school, I chose to push forward and push through that and, and ultimately gain my diploma. I joined the military because I felt that it was a great start to my career and I've made a career out of it. I am currently attending college. I think as an example, I think knowing where I've come from and knowing the struggle that these students here in this community are having on a daily basis, I think with that I would be able to bring a, a great deal of knowledge to the table.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly. Anyone else have any questions? Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, through you, to the candidate. Nice to meet you. Thank you for applying for this school committee and I have no doubt you know what the responsibilities of a board are.
Yes, ma'am.
And the major three being policy, financial, management, and collective bargaining. Which one of the three do you think your skills would be best used? Where would you identify yourself the most?
I think that managing as well as financial, I serve as a logistician with the National Guard, therefore I've been in place of, of numerous amounts of money. And as far as this last deployment, as far as $65 million that I was, held accountable for, whether it be property, whether it be supplies and whatnot, I think that I was able to manage and maintain my inventory and be able to continue to balance that and do it successfully throughout my deployment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Certainly. Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the candidate. Thank you, Mr. Olivo, for putting your name in and for your commitment to this community and our school district. The focus of the school committee over this year and for a length of time has been on student achievement and improving student achievement. As a parent, what do you think are the keys to improving student achievement in our school district?
I think that communication between school and home is very important. I think that there is a bridge right now and I think that a lot of the parents aren't being notified or being held accountable for the education that their students are having or not having success with. I think that as long as we're able to bridge that gap, I think that our, our children in this society, in this community will succeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Condon?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Olivo. Thank you again for applying. My question is, how would you differentiate yourself from the other candidates?
I would differentiate myself in, in the fact that I am a new face. I am not born and raised in Southbridge, Massachusetts. I, I feel as I've been on the outside looking in on a lot of this. I've seen the school committee and the school district go through its ups and downs and I feel that the school committee is on an up right now. And I think that, I think that I could bring a great deal of knowledge to that and I want to be a part of that moving forward so that our children in this community can continue to succeed.
Ms. Appson? Anyone else? Counselor Carrasco?
Again, thank you for coming out and putting your interest. I do have a question. Seeing that our district is so diverse, we, we have so different, our student body is very different. We have low to moderate income students, we have bilingual students. What experience do you have dealing with parents or students that come from that kind of background?
In my employment throughout the years, once I was released from active duty the first time, I returned to Texas and I was a juvenile boot camp instructor. What this meant is that the Hayes County, San Marcos, Texas, had a juvenile boot camp program for, as a last chance for kids before the end result would been juvenile detention or later prison. Those children ranged in age from 13 to 18 years old. Their parents, we held, we housed a school on the premises as well to where we assured that these kids were working towards their education, working towards whether it was a diploma or a GED. A number of those kids were low-income. A number of those kids were bilingual. Not to say that some of those didn't come from a more wealthy environment, but we did. We counseled with the kids, we counseled with the parents in ideas and things that would help them to improve their home life, help them to improve the education that their kids are doing or improve the communication between parent and child. I also, with that, as a youth, I served on my school council to where I was a representative for the school that I went to. And having turned my life around and having sought that education and having completed that education, I was a voice for the school in calling out to those people who were of the same background that I was and pleading with them to better themselves. And I think that these things are, are things that I've worked in before in that sense. Ms. Carrasco?
Thank you. Ms. Appson? Any other questions? Seeing none, I thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
The next person I have is Mr. Dave DiGigorio. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dave DiGigorio, Three Colonial Drive in Southbridge. I was born and raised here in Southbridge. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that's a great thing. And my family's been here since the 1800s, which I think is a fantastic thing. Served on the school committee for nine years up until the last couple of years. And to be honest, I was, I had my name out there. I was running for reelection and I decided at that time that it wasn't such a good idea. The makeup of the school committee at the time was such that I thought new blood was needed and so I withdrew my name. And recently, I felt that the school committee is in need of a little old blood for a number of reasons, most of which would be experience. And I do bring experience. I've served, as I said, for nine years. I was on subcommittees during that entire time. I was assistant chair of the school committee during that time. I was chairman of those subcommittees at that time. So I do bring a diversity to the, the system. My wife teaches in the system. My daughter Lauren graduated from the system. I'm here simply just to put my name in, out there. And I think the gentleman who was up here prior to me was fantastic, to be honest with you. I, I would be negligent to say anything other than that, but I do want to have my name out there as well because I do feel that the system needs an experienced person. Thank you.
Thank you. Opening up for questions. Counselor Carrasco?
Mr. DiGigorio, thank you for, for putting out your name. My question to you would be, in your nine years of experience, what, what experience of the past would you think would benefit the, where we are today?
I think that being on a committee itself, there are so many different rules and state rules that you have to follow that it becomes a virtual nightmare. I know that when I was first on the committee myself, Robert's Rules of Order, for example, was extremely difficult to understand at first. And I had people who mentored me. Going into subcommittees and finding out exactly what's going on in a subcommittee is incredible. People think that, you know, there's, there's a secret aura about, you know, okay, we're gonna sign off tonight and go into a, a subcommittee and people get all, and there isn't. There's nothing there other than the fact that in a subcommittee, you're doing work that is within the scope of the entire committee, but it's also so specific that you want to address that. There, there are issues recently where people are saying, oh, the school committee is obviously having these secret meetings. And I don't put in my opinion one way or the other because I don't know that to be a fact, but I do know that when I was on the committee, most of the time, we made a lot of the decisions in subcommittee. So when we came out here, those decisions were already made and they were laid out. Did it look like that, you know, something underhanded might be going on? That's for the public to decide. But was there? Absolutely not. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Anyone else have any questions? Counselor McCucci?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. DiGigorio, for submitting your name. It's nice to see you. I'm going to ask you the same question as I asked the previous candidate. Do you anticipate running for a possible school committee for the June election?
Yes.
You do?
I would. Obviously, there are variables that play into that, but yes, I would. I don't think that a couple of months is enough time to do what someone wants to do, especially from past experience. Nine years, obviously, you would think would be enough time for anybody to say, okay, I've had enough and here I am again.
And what do you see as pros and cons with the current school, with our, with our district?
Well, I see the district has slowed down. When I first was on the school committee, we started to look at technology and we started to bring it in. And when I say we, I mean we. I'm not, I by no means take credit for, any credit I take, I have to take blame as well and I'd rather not take either. I just put it out like that. So I, I think that our, our present system, the diversity is incredible. You don't have a school district like this really just about anywhere. You can take someone from the Southbridge School District and you can let them off in downtown Boston and they will feel as comfortable in downtown Boston as they do here. I've gone to Italy with the Southbridge Schools and the kids were classy, they were, they represented themselves incredibly. You don't get that at every school. I taught several years at a private school in Connecticut, a semi-private school in Connecticut. Kids were great. I mean, kids were great. You know, you tell a kid to sit down, be quiet, that kid would sit down and he'd be quiet. It doesn't happen so much in the Southbridge school system, but guess what? If you take a kid from that school in Connecticut and you put him on the streets, he's going to have a very hard time. You take a kid from the Southbridge school system, they, they blend right in. They're mature. They have to be mature because of the diversity of which they come from. So that, my opinion, is the greatest asset of this school district. You can learn a whole bunch of ways. You can learn while a teacher is speaking to you and you can learn just from speaking to the person next to you in the Southbridge school system. As far as anything that I find negative in the Southbridge school system, I've always had an issue with the MCAS. I think that education is a lot of hard work, absolutely, but it should be enjoyable. It should be hard, but it should be enjoyable. It's like working out. It's like training for something. The training is difficult and it's hard, yes, but it is enjoyable because you're aiming towards an end. And it's the same thing with education. You're aiming towards an end and the end shouldn't be to meet some criteria that the state has laid down. And that's what Southbridge got away from for a long time, is that they got away from teaching and got away to the, from teaching and then to the MCAS. So they taught simply to the MCAS. That's not teaching. That's not teaching. That's simply teaching to something that is already laid out there for you, which is, is a random thing that could change next year. Next year, those exact same people that put that in place could put something else in place. And it's, it's created in a, in a way that it's not attainable. So Southbridge has been spinning its wheels for all this time to do something that really is attainable. And we've forgotten how to teach our young. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have any questions? Ms. Donovan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Welcome, Mr. DiGigorio. Nice to see you again. My question to you is this. I know that you said you are a nine-year veteran and obviously we appreciated your time. The majority of your time as a school committee member, this, the district as a whole was labeled as a level four district by the Department of Ed. Currently, we're, we're still there. We're working very hard to get out of there, but currently we are still there. I know you've been away for a little while. I'm wondering, what would you, as a committee member, do the same or differently to help improve our student achievement and change our culture to one of better learning and student achievement?
That's a good question. I think what I would do is I would teach, have the teachers do exactly what their professional, their professional calling is, and that's to teach. When I was on the school committee, for many years, we got so wrapped up in watching presentations of the MCAS that you were looking, actually, it almost looked like something out of a house where you were watching a heartbeat go up and down to the scores. And that's all we were doing, was watching the scores go up, the scores come down. But if you teach, if you teach the students and you teach them properly, MCAS is going to come on its own. Instead of trying to teach to the exam, which we do, teach like we would, we would show how to do in college, when we went to college to become teachers. That's what I would do because if you don't, you're going to lose, you're going to lose the kid's interest, you're gonna, you're gonna stunt them educationally. You really will. I've, I've spoken to students, because I've, I run a boxing gym, as you know. You know, I, I'm a volunteer coach for the last 20 years at a boxing gym I have. And the biggest complaint is that from the students, that they want to learn Hemingway, Steinbeck. They, and, and they don't say, I want to learn about Ernest Hemingway's, you know, but, but you get the gist. You get the gist. They want stories. They want it, they want to grow. And instead, everything is about MCAS. You know, physical education is, is you have to have so much essay or whatever to get that MCAS kick, you know, in for the day. And it becomes, it becomes, to, to lack better word, crazy. It really does. It, it's a, it's a crazy situation that we have our kids who are so hungry to learn and we have them in such a state of, of paranoia that it's become, it's become an odd, awkward thing every single day when they walked into the classroom.
Okay. Thank you. My second question is similar to what I had asked Mr. Olivo. How will the kids in the Southbridge Public School benefit by having you on our school committee again?
Well, I think they'd benefit, in my opinion, from my experience being on a school committee before and learning from my mistakes. So it wouldn't be a direct benefit, it'd be an indirect benefit by being on the school I relate to kids. I do. I, and as I said, I've had a gym for 21 years this year. The gym is 90% minority kids. And I just, I just love kids. You know, as far as them benefiting from me, I can't get into the classroom, teach them myself.
Right.
Myself, but through, through you people and through... But through you people and through the school committee, we can reach out and we can, we can make things rational.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. De Gregorio. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm all set. Thank you.
Ms. Condon.
Through you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. De Gregorio. Thank you again. My question, as you mentioned, about the teachers' teaching. How do you think that the teacher performance should be measured?
I think it should be measured by people who are, who have been in the system longer, more seasoned, who have been recognized for their ability to teach. Teaching isn't something that is just simply you're endowed with when you're born. It's something that has developed over a period of years. And I think that that is the best way to teach a teacher. They have to respect the person that is mentoring them. They have to understand, obviously, the subject matter that they're teaching. And a teacher really doesn't have to be more proficient... Teacher 1 doesn't have to be more proficient than teacher 2 in a subject to be a better teacher. Teacher 2 can have less knowledge in that subject and be a better teacher. Being a teacher in itself is a skill. You can have someone who's a great writer who would be horrendous, you know, teaching creative writing freshmen and have someone else who couldn't really write anything that would find its way into a supermarket checkout line, who is a fantastic teacher.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Dr. Dabinka.
Through you. Nice to see you, Dave. You mentioned in passing that you have made some mistakes during the nine years. Can you identify maybe what you were thinking about and how would you avoid maybe making the same mistakes again?
I think that the largest mistake I made was being silent when I should've spoken. I think a lot of times in the past, when I was on the school committee, I took things in, I muddled them over, I made my decision, and then I was quiet. I voted the way I felt I should vote, but I never really gave a whole lot of rationale towards why I was voting that way. And, you know, sometimes you do need to do that. You do need to recognize the fact that you have something to offer. And I think that's the biggest mistake I made.
Just one more. What do you think, after nine years, I think you have had time to reflect, what do you think is the most important role that a school committee member has?
The biggest role a school committee member has is to make the schools so teacher-friendly that they cannot help but be good teachers. That they should have all of the tools that are required, all of the books that need to be there, should be there. They should, they should... The mandates that should be in place, should be in place. Students should love to come to school. Schools should be a place where curiosity can finally be satisfied and the teacher can be, you know, the person that brings that satisfaction. But if we're so busy overseeing the teacher and we're so busy saying we have to meet this particular standard, this state standard, that we lose sight of the fact that teaching and education is supposed to be fun. It's hard work, but it's fun. I mean, real hard work. We should not step out of our role as a school committee member. We are not teachers. We're not teaching professionals. And even if you went to school and you have a background in education, like I do, I have a master's in education, I would never, ever step into a classroom without being asked. That's like a doctor, it's like someone who has a medical degree stepping into an operating room without being asked. You're stepping into holy ground and you should never, ever take that step.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Quinney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. De Gregorio. Thank you again, as everyone said, for your commitment, not only over the last nine years, but your willingness to get back into the fund that is the school committee. Given your experience, I was gonna ask about student achievement, but you've already addressed that. Specifically, we have huge achievement gaps in our district between students who are English language learners and the special ed department. How, given your experience, would you say are the best ways that we, as a school committee, can focus on closing those achievement gaps?
When you say "special ed," you mean special ed or do you mean students that are... English as a secondary language?
Our achievement gaps are in both. Our English language learners are a subgroup that are, have a fairly large achievement gap between regular learners as well as the special ed kids. So they're two separate subgroups.
I think, and this is just simply my opinion, that having kids in their own classrooms, like special ed, having a child in a isolated classroom, doesn't work. It just doesn't work. You have to take and integrate that child into the mainstream. The same thing with kids who have English as a secondary language. I've had kids that have come into the gym who couldn't speak English at all. And within two months, they could understand English. I'm not saying that they could hold, you know, hold down a dissertation in English, but they could understand English. I would put those kids up against any kid that's in a secondary language classroom any day of the week. Because they have no choice when they come into the gym, except to learn the language. When I went to Italy, I'll give you an example. When I went to Italy, I got one of those courses that teach you Italian. I thought that'd be cool. Well, I went to Italy and the first old Italian lady I saw, I said something to her in Italian and she went off. And she just kept going and I had no clue what she was saying. And if I had been able to do it differently, I would've absolutely asked my dad, who can speak Italian, to speak nothing but Italian to me. Because at that point, I'd have to learn it, but I never did that. I just took this course that says, you know, "Good, bene." "Good, bene." And I mean, who knows? You know? So that's what I would do with these kids, is I would make sure that, yeah, there's absolutely a place for them to go to have that two hours a day of special education training. But then, by all means, integrate them right into the classroom. That's what I would do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seen none. Thank you, Mr. De Gregorio.
Thank you very much.
And our final candidate, Ms. LeAnn Pate.
Thank you. Hello, I know most of yous. My name's Lam Pate. I'm from 281 Marcy Street here in town. And I put my name in. I ran two years ago for school committee on... I'm a special needs parent and I was tired of fighting on the outside for my son. So basically, now I sit as the chair on the sped pack for the parents of the special needs children here in town. And when this vacancy opened up, I had a few people calling me and I was like, ah, I don't wanna do it. I don't wanna do it. And then I finally said, I'll do it. I feel the parents need voices, the kids need the voices, and that's why I threw my name in. I'm a very strong advocate for my son and all the special needs kids. So if I can advocate for my son the way I do, I can advocate for any kid in this town. And that's basically why I'm running or put my name in. And if I don't get in, I'll be running this summer. So I had all plans on running. So I'm gonna give it a whirl. So...
Any questions? Councilman Cochee.
Thank you. Ms. Pate, I'll ask you the same question. Obviously, you just stated that. And thank you for submitting your name, that you are interested in running in June. Your experience in the system, pros, cons?
My experience? The cons would be the old administration I dealt with, special ed-wise, inside the school. They don't, they don't take the parents serious, for one, the old administration. And now we have a new administration, excuse me, which is the pro. Superintendent has vast experience, great knowledge. The new director of special ed has great knowledge. She's correcting issues that are in there. She rectified, I believe, 30 areas of noncompliance. And that's within her first year of being here. It can only get better, in my eyes. I support this administration that is sitting here right now immensely. I think they're doing a great job. They're working hard. They're not gonna get it right all the time, but they're working very hard. And I, as a parent, might disagree and say, what are you doing? This is crazy. This is their job. They know better than me. So I have to rely on their experiences. So those are my pros and cons.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Dabinka.
Chair, thanks for applying. I'll do with the same question that I asked our first candidate. Where do you think you can contribute the most in the areas that a school committee really has charge of? Not so much in class management, but really providing the resources and managing resources, so policy development, collective bargaining, or fiscal management?
I'm very strong with policies. When I did work in the working sector, I've been disabled now for over 11 years, I was a manager. And part of it was following company policies and procedures throughout my area of the company, which was actually loss prevention. So I actually was equal to a store manager at the time. So I believe policies are number one. And I've sat in on a lot of the old policy meetings during the summer and learned a lot that some of these policies are outdated and do need to be corrected and reflect the correct policies and wording.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other? Ms. Condon.
Through you, Mr. Chair. To Mrs. Pate. Thank you for applying. What is your vision for education in the community?
My vision? To see all these kids sitting equally in the classrooms. My son sat in a separated classroom. I fought to get him out of there. He wasn't learning. I said, put him in a regular classroom. He can't speak, but I'll tell you, that kid is doing great and I hear words coming out of his mouth now. Best teachers are the other students. And his classroom gets all excited for him. Can't get any better than that. I mean, I've seen growth in my son and having him pulled out of that substantially separated classroom and sitting in the mainstream class. These kids all need a level playing field, no matter if they're, you know, English language learners or special ed. We all need a level playing field in school. And my partner, when she was growing up, she was a first-generation American. She learned English by watching Sesame Street and her parents just threw her in school. Said, sit her there. She learned, she learned. She fails, she fails. She graduated an honor society student, went to college. She's a pharmacist. Her parents had faith in her, their kid, that she can learn, even though she couldn't speak the language. She speaks excellent English. She speaks better English than Italian now, so... But her parents gave her that level field and they helped her. And that's what these kids need, that level playing field. You know? No group is better than the other.
Just one more.
Certainly.
Through you, Mr. Chair. What differentiates you from the other candidates?
I don't know. Not much. I mean, we're all parents. We all live in this community and we all care about the kids. My difference is, is I've seen the high of the school district with my niece, who I raised from sixth grade on, who graduated as an honor student and who is in Mass College of Pharmacy right now and a three-year accelerated nursing program. I see my son, who's on the low of it, you know, barely learning anything and I have to fight, fight, fight for him. So my differences would be, I just got to see the two extremes of the school district. You know, it is great, but then there's still some of that little bit of, I don't wanna see it, kinda thing. But yeah, so I think that's the only difference I have.
Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions? Ms. Donovan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Ms. Pate. Nice to see you, LeAnn. On the resume or the letter that you submitted, you have on there that you have served both on the Commission of Disabilities for the town as well as the Education and Human Services Subcommittee.
Correct.
Do you feel that, or how do you feel being on each one of those town boards will help you in your role as a school committee member, should you be put on the board?
Well, the COD is for the disabled in the community, adults, children. With that, I mean, we help the disabled. We educate them on where they can find equipment, services, if they have complaints of violations of, you know, oh my God, it's...
The ADA? ADA?
Thank you. You know, we help them try to resolve it, you know? And on EHS, I just got on that and I'm kinda just learning the ropes on that committee. I've learned a bit, but I'm very still extremely new to that. I believe it's only been, oh my goodness, like three months, maybe? And I don't think I've yet to seen the whole of what that committee can do, but I'm hoping I can learn more.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question is, I know you've been a very strong advocate for your son and I commend you for that. Would you be ready to transition into being an advocate for all children? Would you have difficulty with that?
Advocating for all the kids?
You're just so passionate for, you know, for your son, but now as a member, you need to advocate for all.
I do advocate.
Is that something you'd be okay doing?
Most certainly. I already advocate for most of the kids in this town. I talk to parents that need help. I tell the parents how they can advocate for their kids. And sometimes I just kinda walk into Director Culligan's office and kinda sit down and say, so, this is what I'm hearing. How can you help them? And I let her know what I hear. Because fair is fair. She's willing to help parents, you know? Instead of telling the parent, yeah, just call the state, report them. I say, go to her. She's reasonable. She'll listen to you. She'll help you. And I help the parents. I tell them where they can find information regarding the laws for their children, you know? And I'm willing to take calls anytime, except after 10:30.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Certainly. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Ms. Quinney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Ms. Pate. Thank you, Ms. Pate, for putting your name in and for coming tonight.
Thank you.
The question I had for you, as you know, the focus of the school committee has been really, our goals and our objectives have been all focused... really, our goals and our objectives have been all focused on improving student achievement within the district. What would you envision as the priorities in order to improve student achievement in the district? How can we do that better?
Overall, we need to lower the, um, the needs improvement section of the MCAS on the special ed and the English language learners. They actually were the highest on the lowest scores. I think if we can help those kids, bring those scores to the proficient, then this district will start losing its Level Four status. With those kids right now performing below average, it's holding this district down. So as much as we focus on general education children, that focus needs to be on the English language learners, as well as the special ed. And I do know special ed kids have done immensely in math and science of recent scores. And that's the high school kids with the science. So, I mean, they can do it. They just need to learn it differently. They're not gonna learn it just sitting in the classroom, listening to the teacher. It might have to be a hands-on kinda thing. And, and I think the district's trying to figure out ways to help all these kids. Once we can figure it out and help them all, they'll all achieve. They all should go to higher education if they want it and know that, "I breezed through high school. Easy peasy. I can do it in college." That's literally what my niece said to me. "My teachers were so hard on me, I'm finding college easy." Great. She had some great teachers in high school that pushed these kids to their limit and got them to where college is actually not hard for them to learn. That's, that's, all these kids should have that opportunity. You know, be a two-year community, go to, go to Yale, go to Harvard. You know? They, they all have that right to achieve, you know? If they want it, they should be able to know, "I have all the tools I need to go out, go to college, and go get an awesome job." You know? If they don't know they have it, they're just gonna sit here.
Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for all three candidates coming forward in this school district and this community should be proud. And either way, I hope I see all three of yous on the ballot in June. So with that being said, we will move on to agenda item number four. Vote to appoint the candidate of choice to the school committee effective immediately through six-thirty, uh, two thousand and fourteen due to resignation of a former member.
So moved.
With that being said, I just ask everyone to state the name of the candidate of choice, and it will be a strictly majority vote. After that, I would ask the candidate that does win, I have the town clerk here tonight. She will be more than willing to swear into candidate that won, so they can actually sit on the school committee meeting, which is following this. So with that being said, I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Clemens.
David De Gregorio.
Counselor Carrasco.
Chris Alivo.
Counselor Langivan.
Oh boy. Pate.
Counselor Manah.
David De Gregorio.
Counselor McCucci.
Leanne Pate.
Counselor Peliquin.
Leanne Pate.
Counselor Vandal.
Alivo.
Ms. Congdon.
Chris Alivo.
Dr. Domenico.
Chris Alivo.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Alivo.
Okay. Ms. Donovan.
Chris Alivo.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Chris Alivo.
Ms. Quinney.
Chris Alivo.
It's seven, Chris Alivo. Three, Leanne Pate. Two, Dave De Gregorio.
Congratulations to Chris Alivo. Ms. Alivo, if you'd like to get up there, Ms. Douse will sway you in, and then we will have adjournment. Congratulations.
Could I have, could you please raise your right hand? Do you Christopher Alivo solemnly swear to perform all due as incumbent view as a member of the Southbridge School Committee until June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and by laws of the Town of Southbridge. So help you God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir. I have to give you the conference of interest in the open meeting law. So if you were just signing your name right here, saying that I gave that to you today, sir. And I will mail you your appointment card to you tomorrow if you wanted to stop in. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to come around and shake everyone's hand. Thank you. We will move on to agenda item number five. I'm looking for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? Show of hands is sufficient. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
[inaudible]
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 Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, December third. This meeting is starting a little late, because there was a meeting prior, a committee of the whole, a joint meeting of the school committee and the town council, so we're starting this a little bit later than the seven o'clock posted time. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's time for public input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak this evening? Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven-twelve P.M. May I have a roll call vote? Ms. Congdon.
Present.
Dr. Domenico.
Present.
Ms. Donovan.
Present.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Present.
Mr. Alivo.
Present.
Ms. Quinney.
Present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular school committee meeting on November nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Congdon makes the motion. Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Quinney seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the minutes? I just have one quick thing that I noticed when I printed them out today. There are two page twos, so the pages will just have to be renumbered. That was it.
Okay.
We'll make that change. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Domingo?
Abstained.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Abstained.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Four yes, two abstain.
Thank you very much. Under chairwoman's announcements, first and foremost, I'd like to welcome Christopher Olivo to the school committee. It's great to have you aboard. We look forward to working with you and we'll work quickly to get you up to speed and running, I promise, so we'll set aside some time to do that when it's convenient for you. I would also just like to thank all the candidates who put their names in the hat. We are very excited that people want to join us and help us continue the good works that are happening, and we hope that all of the candidates throw their hat in the ring in the June election. So, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say? Would you like to say anything?
Looking forward to working with all of you and looking forward to being brought up to speed.
Thank you. I would just like to remind everybody that Friday, December 6th, is an early release day. Schools will be released at 11:10 for the middle high school and at 11:45 for the elementary The other thing I want to mention is the second annual vigil for peace will be held on December 14th, that's a Saturday, at 5:00 PM at McManfield. This is something that councillor, town councillor Moriarty and I put together the first vigil for peace last year after the Sandy Hook incident. It's unbelievable to think that it's been a year since that incident occurred, but we think it's important to bring the community together, not so much in memory of Sandy Hook this year as it is for us to come together as a community to support one another in a peaceful way. The public is welcome to attend that. The plan is for five o'clock to have a vigil on McManfield, candlelight vigil, followed by possibly a light meal at the middle high school. Please stay tuned for more details, we'll get those out to the public as they become available. Under reports, our student representative advised me earlier this evening that she was not able to attend tonight, and she asked that I relay the following announcements on her behalf. Wednesday, December 4th, the Middle School National Junior Honor Society will have an induction ceremony at six o'clock in the Southbridge Middle High School auditorium. This is going to be taped for public viewing. On Thursday, December 5th, Mr. Carrero is taking his US history class on a trip to the Freedom Trail. On Friday, December 6th, the middle high school band and chorus will be performing at the Festival of Giving Trees. Tuesday, December 10th, the Booster Club will have a meeting at 6:00 PM at the middle high school. On Wednesday, December 11th, there will be a couple of things. The freshman math meet, a school council meeting at 5:30 in the Southbridge Middle High School library, and the financial aid night at 6:00 PM. Translation in Spanish will be provided. Rosa does this much better. On Thursday, December 12th, the middle high school concert, there will be, I think, a holiday concert at the middle high school at 6:30, and on Wednesday, December 18th, the high school concert will be, my apologies, at 7:00 PM. That's a high school band and choir concert. So, we miss Rosa, but thank her for taking the time to share those announcements with us this evening. We'll move on to school committee reports. The curriculum subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have a report, but I would like to remind curriculum subcommittee members that tomorrow, Wednesday, December 4th, we will be taking a school facilities tour beginning at 9:00 AM. We'll start with Eastford Road and then we'll move on to West Street, then Charlton Street School, and then on to the middle high school. This is the first time that this curriculum subcommittee has done something like this before, but we will be traveling with our director of teaching and learning, Pat Gardner, and it'll be our way to really get a on hands, hands-on look of what's actually taking place in these schools during the daytime. We'll be visiting classrooms and individual buildings, so it's something that we're all very much looking forward to. Second of all, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 9th, at 6:30 PM in room M-100 of 25 Colav, and the two major items before that meeting will be to once again review and hopefully approve our subcommittee goals for the 2013-2014 school year, and to also reflect on our facilities tour that we will take tomorrow to get some feedback and some insight of where we go from there based on what we see tomorrow. Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Policy subcommittee, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report. The next meeting of the policy subcommittee will be December 11th at 7:00 PM in room M-100, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The negotiation subcommittee, I'll report that we do not have any meetings currently scheduled at this time. Thank you. The family and community engagement subcommittee, Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our subcommittee met last night at 6:30. We had two guest speakers. Holly Cristo of the Literacy Volunteers described the literacy volunteer program, which offers a unique one-on-one approach. Ms. Cristo also mentioned how there are changes to the GED program as of December 31st. The current GED program will no longer be offered. The major changes to this program is that the test will be strictly on the computer. The new test will align with the Common Core standards. And three, there will be two levels of the GED testing, one for job readiness and the other for people who want to go to college. The next speaker was Margaret Morrissey from the Jacob Edwards Library. She discussed event happenings at the library. We also discussed how to better collaborate our resources between all of the libraries in town. A list of parent organizations in the district was made and distributed to all present, and that list will be sent out through the school district and through the community, so everybody in the district will know the different parent organizations in all of our schools. Our next meeting will be Monday, January 6th, at 6:30 in room M-100 on 25 Colav. Our guest speaker for that meeting will be Julie Hurley of the Southbridge Elementary Arts Initiative. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. There are no presentations this, oh, so I'm sorry. A report from the sped pack liaison, Mrs. Quinney, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report, other than the next sped pack meeting will be December 19th at 6:00 PM in room M-100 at 25 Colav. All are welcome to attend and encouraged to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinney. There are no presentations this evening, and there is no report of the finance director this evening, so we move on to report of the superintendent, Mr. Neverco.
Thank you, and I want to congratulate Mr. Olivo for being elected to the school committee. We look forward to having diverse representations besides just me up here. So, welcome, and we look forward to you working with us. I'm not going to say anything sexist, so I'll get in trouble. So, let it go at that. I have a number of announcements this evening. First off, last week, we held our first parent night called Acronymania, and I want to thank all of the school staffs and all the administrators that worked very hard to have tables there with staff members that were grade appropriate and school appropriate to discuss all of those acronyms that are out there that we constantly get bombarded with. It could have been well, better attended, but it's a start, and I think it's really important that we start and then we say we're going to do something and we move on with that, and as parents get used to the fact that we will not cancel events, et cetera, we'll be able to get better and better turnouts. It's in our November newsletter. Secondly, I just want to follow up on what was said about the National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony tomorrow night at six o'clock, and I think that's another incredibly important thing to recognize, our students who not only perform well academically, but also have the elements that the National Junior Honor Society strives, which is character, number one, scholarship evident by their work, develop leadership, and then service to the community. I think that's one of those things that we need to focus more on, is to develop the service mindset, that we are members of a larger village, and that in order for that village to thrive, we all have to contribute our expertise, and most importantly, our time. And you do those four things, it generally leads to good citizenship. And I just want to say that when the American public schools were first created, and the first schools that were open to the public were created in this great Commonwealth, and it was basically a church school, and it was, and the act was called the Satan Deluder Act, and the goal was you teach people to read the Bible, they will become less liable to follow in sinful ways. And from that, the public education system evolved, and the strength of this country is its public education system. And the fact that people can come from all over, as was stressed in the earlier meeting, bring their different backgrounds, experiences, so on, and learn the language, thrive in the educational setting, and then contribute to this country. That's what makes this country what it is today, and input and from all the various people. So, I think the Satan Deluder Act was incredibly successful. We are the leading nation in the world because the schools strive on the fact that it welcomes all, provides the best education possible, and most importantly, the goal is to create good, hard-working, productive citizens. And tomorrow night, you will see 28 seventh and eighth graders being inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. Last year, I attended an induction ceremony for the National Honor Society. Eight young ladies were inducted to that, which I thought was a very small group, so I'm very pleased to see the number of seventh graders and eighth graders that are being recognized for their, not only for their scholarship, but also for their citizenship, their character, their leadership, and their service to the school. So, I think that's, and I'm glad it's being taped and will be broadcast to the community. On the same note, when I look at our top performing students, we also have to provide for our more difficult students. When I say more difficult, the state has passed a new law that says, as of July 1, 2014, no school system in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts can suspend or expel students out of the school system without providing an alternative educational program for them. Whereas before, because of behaviors and zero tolerance and so on for any acts of violence, or drugs, or et cetera, they could be expelled from the school, and no other school was required to accept those particular students. They changed the law, and I know that if we don't plan ahead now, comes September 2014, when we open and we have issues, we'll be whining about another unfunded mandate from the state, which it is. So, what I did two weeks ago, I took three of the administrators from the middle high school, and we went and visited a couple of programs in Philadelphia run by a national company called Ombudsman, and they provide alternative placements for not only disruptive students, but special needs, ELL programs, and so on around the country. And I knew about them because I've been a superintendent for 100 years, and my concern was that we have a very high outplacement rate for special education, and disruptive students we're sent to at an average of $36,000 to $40,000 per year. They can provide similar services in school, in our buildings, and so on, for considerably less. So, I think it's important that I spend a little more time investigating. The director of the program will be coming to the middle high school next Thursday, on the 12th, and then reviewing our facilities. So, what I want to do is create a partnership with them, rather than just sending the kids out and so on, is to have them set up our program, train our people, and then we can take it over ourselves for a considerably less cause, and at the same time, take students who need that special support and so on out of the regular setting where they don't disrupt the education of others. Right now, what we do is we kick them out, and they're out in the streets, and dropout rates are, and other social, I don't want to say crime rates, other social issues will just keep on skyrocketing unless we do something proactive and work with them. The program that I saw was two, there were two, one in suburban Philadelphia, one in the city of Philadelphia. One dealt with dropout prevention program and credit recovery for Philadelphia. The other one was, they had two sessions, and I was very impressed with the fact they rented a storefront, and they ran a morning session for the high school students from 7:30 to 12:30, and then an afternoon session for middle school students from 12:30 to 4:30, and they were able to keep about 19 students, 20 students per group, and as we spent time with those kids, they were on task, well behaved, and the system was not just sending them out to the street. That's the key, and that's one of the things I think we want to avoid. There was an article this morning in the New York Times about expulsions, and particularly in South Florida, Palm Beach County had the highest rate of expulsions in the country, and the highest number of arrests in the schools by school resource officers. And obviously, the majority of the students were minority kids, and the organizations said, "Let's figure out where we can do it," so they made a complete U-turn, and they said, "Let's provide programs and services, counseling, and things like that." And as a district with almost 200,000 students, they've embarked on, rather than arrest and expel, they said that we'll keep them in school, we'll provide programs for them, and in the long run, it's better for the community anyway. So, that's one of the things we're looking at. And I had a very good meeting with the director of music, Dr. David Garcia, this afternoon. He and I have been meeting for a while, and obviously, we, the school system, appointed him as director of music education, and we have some very talented music teachers, but the band and the program has diminished over the years, the last 15 years or so. And obviously, the reason is, if you're going to have a successful high school orchestra and band, you have to have a feeder program, and the feeder program was eliminated a number of years ago, so we're working together, and for, I've asked him to take Mr. Kim, who was a part-time music teacher, to meet with the principals next week, and then start providing some music lessons for elementary students, and then also put it back into the curriculum next year rather than being a pull-out program. So, that's one of the things that I want to ensure, that, you know, as I said earlier, you know, education is a whole lot of things. Every good school I've ever seen has had a great orchestra, and if you have a great orchestra, you have good discipline, and learning music is another language. So, all of those things all contribute. I think when I first came here, I spoke about, it used to be called the Westinghouse Science Scholars Program, now it's run by Siemens Corporation, and two years ago, I was looking at all of the national winners, and these kids performed incredible scientific experiments and so on, and then as I was reading the bios of those kids, every single one of them was also an accomplished musician. And the old saying was, "You want to get something done, give it to a busy man," or person, excuse me. So, we're looking forward, on a part-time basis within our budget, to start rebuilding that program at the elementary level, and then we can move on to the high school. So, I thought that was very encouraging news, and the push from that, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. There are no school committee actions this evening, other than the unfinished business of second reading of policy file BB, school committee legal status, second reading of policy file BBA, school committee member authority, and the second reading of policy file BBBA, BBBB, school committee member qualifications oath of office. Dr. Domingo? Dr. D'Amico?
I make a motion to waive the reading to all three policies.
Thank you. As Dr. D'Amico makes the motion?
Second.
Mrs. Donovan seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Abstained.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Five yes, one abstain.
Thank you. The motion carries. The next regular school committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 17th, in council chambers. As a reminder, at that meeting, we will be honoring the high school, middle school, high school, MCAS honorees will be there, and also the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients will be honored that evening. Is there any other new business? Mrs. Congdon?
I just wanted to mention, thank you, Madam Chair, that tomorrow, Wednesday, at Pizzeria Uno, West Street School will be offering homework help. Teachers will be available to help students of the district from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. As long as parents remain at Pizzeria Uno, you don't have to purchase anything, but if your children or child needs help, you can bring your child to Pizzeria Uno from 4:00 to 6:00, go enjoy a meal, but as long as you stay there, your children will have help with the homework, and there will be teachers available to do that. So take advantage of this great collaboration that West Street School and Pizzeria Uno are offering to parents and children. There'll be also a principal's coffee held at West Street School from 9:00 to 10:00 on Friday, this Friday, from 9:00 to 10:00. And I just wanted to mention, I had received a mailing from ASPIRA. Their Fifth Annual Fiesta de Reyes will be held on Saturday, January 4th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Polish Club, and it was, it is $35 a ticket or $50 a couple. You can email info@aspiramass.org or call 508-764-7473 to purchase tickets to this event, and the proceeds will go back to benefit scholarships of the youth of ASPIRA. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Congdon. Is there any other new business this evening? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a few items. First of all, I wanted to welcome our new member, Mr. Olivo. I always want to call you Olivia. I don't know why I have that in my mind, but, Mr. Olivo, welcome. It's a pleasure to have you here, and again, I wanted to thank Mr. De Gregorio and Ms. Pate earlier this evening for their commitment to our school district as well. One thing in my notes, Mr. Nebberco touched upon, was acronym mania. I did attend that forum, and I thought it was very well done, very informative. The teachers that were there and the presentations that they had for parents, I thought were spectacular, so much that I didn't know, Madam Chair, through you to the Superintendent, if maybe at some point, we could put some of that either on our local television channel through the high school, or if we could perhaps highlight one of those areas that were there at a future school committee meeting, the ones that I had seen relative to the Achievement Network, Focus on Results, Keys on Literacy, a lot of really, really good information, and I just think it's, it was so wonderful, it's worth sharing, and I didn't know if maybe somewhere down the road, we could provide that opportunity to get more of that information out there.
That's one of those things that should be repeated because we forget what they mean, and new acronyms keep popping up. We just, a new one is there now, it's called PARK, and that's a new test we have to take. And then what is the Common Core being? And what is it, how does it affect what we do in the schools? Those are kinds of important conversations. I think the best way to do that would be through the Curriculum Subcommittee, and then have that, and then I have the slides and things for that evening, and I think that we should regularly provide some sort of a program where we're constantly informing the community about these new programs, these new acronyms that affect their child, and the community. So, yes, we will, and I think maybe that would be a subject for the Curriculum Subcommittee to discuss, and then let's look at what Focus on Results is doing, what ANET is doing, and then how does that work. We will be providing a report card done by the state regarding the Thailand program that, much to my amazement, has never been sent out before. A letter went out, but the law requires that the report go out there. I'll bring copies of that, I'll send copies of that to you tomorrow, okay?
Okay, thank you. A couple other things that I had, don't want to beat a dead horse, but I had in my notes about the Junior National Honor Society tomorrow night, and I just, again, wanted to commend those students and those inspiring young scholars. It's not easy to get into that and to do that hard work, so congratulations to them and their parents, to the teachers that involved, and especially Ms. Jalbert, who was their advisor and is doing a great job for advising these young, inspiring scholars. I was on the district website today, and I noticed that on the homepage is the honor roll for all of our honor roll students in grades two through five. They're separated by school, so if you were to go to the district website and click on your child's school, you'll see a list of names of the kids who achieved both high honor and as well as honor status. I know that our schools do a great job of also sending it to our local newspaper, but if you want to get it before the paper does, the website has it. And then finally, I had a flyer that I had received from the Quinnabog Valley Arts Council relative to the puppet shows. These puppet shows are wonderful, and that's why I tend to announce them every time they come up. The next one is this Saturday at 11:00 a.m., so the date is December 7th, 11:00 a.m. over at the Arts Center on 111 Main Street, and this puppet show is called Professor Diggin's Jurassic Journey, and it's a fun-filled fantasy with original songs, dinosaur puppets, and it's an interactive performance with the audience as well, and it's sure to be for all those little lovers of dinosaurs. It is sponsored by United Lens. Adults, tickets are $5, which can be purchased at the door, and the children will be admitted at no charge as long as they are accompanied by an adult. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to welcome Mr. Olivo. Thank you for your commitment to our school district, and also thank Ms. Pate and Mr. De Gregorio for their commitment to the community and school district and their desire to want to serve that. I also wanted to remind people that there is a policy bulletin board at 25 Colav if you have any questions regarding the policies that we've waived readings of or policies that have been adopted recently. They're all posted up across from the business office at 25 Colav, so you can find those there. And that, oh, and I was able to attend the Thanksgiving Day game, which was an excellent game, though very cold, and it was nice to see the band perform, and all the people that came out to support the high school team and the band as well. So, thank you, and the cheerleaders. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we will have a brief executive session tonight, so we need a vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 3, and the chair so declares.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. D'Amico made the motion. Mrs. Congdon seconded the motion. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. We will return to open session for the purpose of adjournment only.